Okay, we got the, okay.
The dots at the bottom.
So I will call to order this meeting. Live to board of trustees. I'll ask that we mute ourselves when we're not speaking to avoid unwanted background noise. And of course, everyone's welcome to speak up and contribute at the appropriate time. But when you're not speaking, please mute your microphone. We have a long agenda. Thankfully, we had a work session last week and covered a lot of these things and had questions. Of course, if there's more questions or discussion for tonight, we'll have that opportunity. Our first, oh, we'll introduce the board members and our director like we usually do. And if you care to share what you're reading, please do. I'll call on people to introduce one another since, or each, ourselves, since we don't have a table to go around. I'm John Walsh. I did not prepare what I'm reading, but it's some kind of fantasy book about libraries. So that's what I'm reading. Jamie, you want to go next?
My name's Jamie Burkhart, and I'm reading a graphic, Not Enough.
Marilyn, oh, Marilyn stepped away. Fred? You're muted, Fred. Fred, you're muted. We can't hear you. If you press the space bar, you should unmute.
There you go.
Hey. We're using Peggy's computer, so, so that's, that's it. I'm Fred Reissinger, and I'm reading a book called Drudge.
Thank you, Fred. Kathy?
I'm Kathy Loser, and I'm still reading the Obama book called Promised Land. It's a heavy, heavy book. There's going to be a second volume, too, so I got to get through this one first.
Thank you. Kari?
I'm Kari Essery, and I am reading The Warmth of Other Suns about the black migration, basically from the south to the north. Very interesting.
And Marilyn?
And I'm Marilyn Wood, and I am still reading I Have Sand in All the Wrong Places.
Thank you, everyone. And I found what I'm reading is The Midnight Library by Matt A. And we'll jump into our agenda now. Do, our first item is the consent agenda through which we approve our minutes, monthly finance report, monthly bills for payment and personnel report. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Kari has made such a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Kathy, seconds. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, comments, corrections on the items in the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote to follow the protocols that have been established for Zoom meetings. We have to do a roll call on every vote, and Lorraine will, will call on us to cast our a or nay. So I'll turn it over to Lorraine for our vote on the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll go in alphabetical order. Jamie Burkhart?
Yay.
Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
She's just entering the meeting.
Okay. Kathy Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
And John Walsh?
Hi. Next, Marilyn's monthly report, our director's monthly report. Marilyn, anything you want to highlight in that for us?
Just that we returned to our cautious approach. That's really a safeguard for patrons and our staff. We returned to curbside service on November 30th. But there are plenty of other services that we're continuing to offer, including Wi-Fi access in our parking lot, printing services by request, virtual programming, certainly access to all of our electronic resources, and even librarians are still available for chat or reference services. So those are what we have now. Outside of the, the report, though, I'd like to report something that's pretty exciting, too. This time of year, this often happens, and this year, we're very fortunate to say that we've received notice of two grants this week, or in the last week and a half. Both serve and fit our strategic goals very well. They support access to digital resources and both hardware and content. And they focus on diversity and advancing racial and social justice through, through the, the programs or services that we will be offering. So the Wall Family Charitable Trust, that's a name that you've all heard before, and this year, they awarded a grant to us for $5,300. And it's for the purchase of 10 hotspots and both physical and ebooks. And then the city of Bloomington, I sent a press release earlier today to you. And they, through their digital equity grant, have awarded us $10,500, which will purchase an additional 10 hotspots and also iPads, which we will actually loan to the community. So it will provide access to those who may not have it.
Cool.
Any questions I could answer about the report?
I, I have one, sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
How, how often does the library, do you look at the data and the metrics to decide we're going to close, we're going to open again? How, how often is that?
Daily. We check, we check the counts for Monroe County in particular, but we're looking at the state as well. So we are, we are, we check it at noon every day when it comes out, just to get an idea of where things are. We were, we were a bit preemptive this time, but it was all based on what the expectations are that we saw of the rising numbers. But we do check daily.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. On old business, moving on, we have branch planning and approval to move forward with design development. Want to update us on that, Marilyn?
Right, and so I forwarded in this packet, but also before the schematic design that, that Matthew Architects has been working on for some months. And, and in the schematic design, obviously, it includes both just the design, it begins to, to put on paper and that not only the ideas of our services, but how the actual building will look in terms of both elevations and access and site planning and all the things that go into actually building from the, the part that you can't see all the way to the finished building. And so at this point in time, and we, we come to a contract phase with Matthew Architects that says they've completed schematic design, and we're ready to move to design development, which is the next phase. And then following that, it would be construction development. So we're at a point that we need approval to say, yes, we're ready for you to continue on with design development.
Is that an action item, then?
It is an action item for us to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve moving forward with the design development phase of the new branch?
So moved.
Second.
We had a motion from Jamie, and a number of people seconded. Chris, were you one of those people? Yeah, Chris seconded. Any discussion on what's coming up next with the branch approving this next phase? Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call vote. Lorraine?
All right. Jamie Burkhart? Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Catherine Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
John Walsh?
Hi. Next, under new business, we have a, a number of things to approve. Many of these are routine annual approvals and/or things we discussed in our work session. But of course, as usual, have opportunity to discuss all these items. First, we have a motion to approve the 2021 board meeting calendar.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you can call the vote, Lorraine.
Jamie Burkhart?
Hi.
Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Kathy Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
And John Walsh?
Hi. And do we have a motion to approve the 2021 fee schedule?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or anything anyone wants to highlight from this? Seeing none, please call the roll call vote, Lorraine.
Jamie Burkhart?
Hi.
Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Catherine Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
And John Walsh?
Hi. Do we have a motion to approve resolution to adopt the 2021 holiday closing schedule, pay schedule, and wage and salary schedule and pay increase?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Among the other things in here, we're approving a 2.75, well, there are other details, but Kyle, can you say what we're approving in terms of the pay increase?
Either receive a 75 cent or 2.75 percent incremental increase per hour, whichever is higher. And this will begin with the pay period beginning December 21, 2020, and ending January 3, 2021.
Any discussion? Just want to thank all the library staff, and we're grateful we can do a pay increase in these challenging times. And thank you to all the staff for all the hard work delivering library services, always and especially through the pandemic. Not seeing any further discussion? Can you call the vote, please, Lorraine?
Jamie Burkhart?
Hi.
Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Catherine Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger? Fred, we can't hear you.
Hi. How's that?
Yep. And John Walsh?
Hi. Next, do we have a motion to approve the resolution to set the salary for the library director?
So moved.
Second.
And we're the, Kyle, can you put in the chat or just tell me the figure? I didn't write that down, and it's not in the packet.
Lorraine, you have the copy with you, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you read that number?
Did I put it to everyone, or?
You can, I'm going to read it out. You can just put it in the chat or just tell them.
It's 114, 257.12 cents.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the director's salary for 2021. And that represents the same 2.75 percent increase that the rest of the staff are receiving. The resolution states, comes now the Board of Trustees of the Monroe County Public Library, having adopted the 2021 salary resolution for all employees except the library director, hereby adopts the following resolution concerning the annual salary for the library director Marilyn Wood. For the calendar year 2021, the annual salary for the library director Marilyn Wood shall be together with all appropriate, appropriate benefits consistent with the position and witness whereof. The Board of Trustees of the Monroe County Public Library has adopted this salary, salary resolution for the library director this 16th day of December 2020. We have a motion and a second to approve that resolution. Is there any discussion? I'd just like to take this opportunity, should do it more often, but at this time of the year, to express the board's support and confidence in Marilyn, in Marilyn, our director, especially during this very challenging year. And with her leadership and the excellent staff working with her, we continue to deliver library services to our community as important now as any time they ever have been, while also paying special attention to the safety and well-being of our staff, our excellent staff. And throughout all that, we continue to move forward with important projects like the branch and our strategic plan. So thank you, Marilyn, and the whole library team for all the work done this year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Then please call the roll call, Lorraine?
Yeah. Jamie Burkhart?
Hi.
Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Catherine Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
And John Walsh?
Hi. And do we have a motion to approve the 2021 agreement between Katz and the town of Ellisville?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can you remind us again, please, Michael, what this agreement represents in terms of the increase or any other highlights for this year?
Sure, I'd, I'd be happy to. This contract that we discussed at the work session last week, this represents a 4% increase from 2020 levels. This based on what's now called the maximum levy growth quotient.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions for Michael or discussion on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll, Lorraine?
Jamie Burkhart?
Hi.
Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Catherine Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
And John Walsh?
Hi. And do we have a motion to approve the 2021 agreement between Katz and Monroe County?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any highlights on this one, Michael?
This, this is the same level of increase, 4%, maximum level of growth quotient. And before, before it gets, the chance gets away from me, I just want to really thank all the folks at Ellisville and County Council, County Commissioners, for their support all of these years. We really couldn't have done it without them, and especially now, it's really important.
And the board echoes those thanks. It's been great working with our partners in the county and the city all these years. Any other discussion or questions? You can call the vote, please, Lorraine?
Yep. Jamie Burkhart? Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Catherine Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
And John Walsh?
Hi. And on our third of four Katz items, do we have a motion to approve the memo of understanding between Katz and WFHB?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve our MOU with Katz and WFHB, another great partnership that Katz leads for the library. Any discussion or questions on this item? Please call the roll, Lorraine?
Jamie Burkhart?
Hi.
Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Catherine Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
And John Walsh?
Hi. And do we have a motion to approve an update to Katz government meeting coverage guidelines?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. These updates deal with the new climate we're in with the pandemic and safety issues, and also content that might appear unexpectedly from things like Zoom bombing. Anything you'd like to add to that, Michael?
No, that's, that's a really concise explanation. It's really just kind of, kind of procedural housekeeping, keeping up with the modern time.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? And please call the vote, Lorraine?
Jamie Burkhart?
Hi.
Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Catherine Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
John Walsh?
Hi. And do we have a motion to approve our 2021 agreement with Alcentro? Another great library partnership with another important group in the community.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Jamie Burkhart?
Hi.
Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Catherine Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
And John Walsh?
Hi. And do we have a motion to approve a vendor bid for van replacement for our outreach services?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We got a lot of detail on this in our work session, and exciting, always exciting when we replace one of these big vehicles for the very important outreach services to, you know, nursing homes, remote parts of the county, delivering our services everywhere we can. Any questions or discussion or highlights on this item? Seeing none, Lorraine?
Jamie Burkhart?
Hi.
Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Catherine Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
John Walsh?
Hi. And do we have a motion to approve our internet and computer use policy?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Very minor changes of dates and a word and a piece of punctuation, I think. Any discussion or questions on this one? Please call the vote, Lorraine?
Jamie Burkhart?
Hi.
Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Catherine Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
John Walsh?
Hi. And do we have a motion to approve updated checkout policy?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Maybe I can jump in here. This is primarily to cover the, the changes that we're making with our former Read It Off program and expanding opportunities for people to, to reduce their fines through other, other ways.
I was struggling to come up with another concise description, and that was a little harder for me, but it's a, yeah, a great extension of an important program to cover everybody and not limited to children, young adults. So glad we can do that. And I got lost. Did we get our motion yet on this one?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comment, questions on this? Please call the vote, Lorraine?
Okay. Jamie Burkhart?
Hi.
Kari Essery?
Hi.
Christine Harrison?
Hi.
Catherine Loser?
Hi.
Fred Reissinger?
Hi.
John Walsh?
Hi. And do we have a motion to approve the 2021 to 2023 strategic plan?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This document represents a great deal of thought and work. It's required of us to do periodically. It goes to the state library, is that correct, Marilyn? So we're required to do it, but it's also an important document for us to guide our planning and our work over the next three years. And thank you to all the many people on the library staff and members of the community who provide input. Lots of people who help develop this document. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, you can call the vote. Seeing none, you can call the vote again, please, Lorraine.
Jamie Burkhart.
Aye.
Kari Essery.
Aye.
Christine Harrison.
Aye.
Catherine Loser.
Aye.
Fred Reisinger.
Aye.
John Walsh.
Aye. And not only did they supply us with four items to approve, but we also get an update from Katz this month. So I will turn it over to Michael for our update on community access television services.
Greetings again. I... Let's see, where to start? As you know, it's been quite a year. Probably the biggest, the biggest thing we've had to surmount this year was that we have the... Let me digress 10 seconds. We built this amazing new architecture for our master control and main engineering, and it's beautiful. And we have this old, as I have always called it, state-of-the-art 1995 TV studio. And we, but that's all been dying off for years. So it's now what we dubiously termed our lifeboat. So when all of this came down with the pandemic back earlier this year, we were still running on that ancient architecture, but we suddenly had to make the jump to the new equipment, which was not completely connected to the city's telecom hotel, which is how it goes out to the community. So a lot of what I'm about to say next is a testament to the creative and diligent effort of production manager Martin O'Neill, who, working with Rob Stockwell and Adam Stilwell, was able to create kind of a Katz Frankenstein, where we connected the old architecture to the new architecture, which has been enabling us to use these, you know, very current servers that we use, that we'll be using for, you know, another decade to come, with this older architecture. And it's really been... I mean, there were some very, very long hours, and we weren't sure it was going to work, and we, of course, ran into problems along the way, but had to order a little bit, some signal amplifiers, distribution amplifiers, but right now, it's all working great. And as you've seen, actually, our meeting coverage is up substantially. Of course, public events have plummeted, of course, but in terms of meeting, meeting coverage, we're averaging like 60 or more meetings a month. So it's really, it's really quite extraordinary. So there are so many other things we could talk about, you know, the Katz crew, there, I would say, everyone has really given everything they can to this job that they believe in, such that we can continue to provide dependable, transparent coverage of governmental meetings. But really, the main, main thing I wanted to stress with this update was, and I wish I could show you some pictures of all this, because it's really quite extraordinary, but that we've got this wonderful architecture that's really ready to go for, for the, for the next decade at least, but we still have to hook that into the city's telecom hotel. And we have this wonderful hybrid creation largely at the hands of Martin O'Neill. And I salute you, sir, and your coworkers and everybody at Katz for working so hard. Any questions I could take about this?
Thank you, Michael. How long will the hybrid system be going? Will it be phased out as a hybrid at some point, or is that going to be a long-term solution?
We are going to phase out the lifeboat just as soon as we can. We've been working with radio and TV, well, George Hofstadter, who's the engineer for radio and TV services at IU, and he is, he, they've been helping us all along. They helped us. We had actually one of our former staffers designed the entire structure of the system, and then we worked with George Hofstadter and his wonderful crew to install everything, and then we're just getting ready to flip the switch, and then the pandemic hit. So just as soon as we can hook this into the city's telecom hotel, we will gladly watch the Katz lifeboat just sort of disappear over the horizon and hope to never see it again. One other point I wanted to make, you mentioned hybrid meetings, something that we were testing at the library work session last week. The pandemic has given us this, it's kind of an unusual opportunity technically, and that is to create these sort of hybrid meetings. And we imagine that as the vaccinations are distributed and there's that kind of sense of safety that's restored to all of our communities, probably, you know, summer or around, then we will still be doing these sorts of hybrid meetings. It will be sort of Zoom and probably some in-person, and those will probably be combined a bit. So again, just trying to anticipate what happens next. And again, a lot of credit to Martin O'Neill, who put together and was testing the hybrid system at the meeting last week. So I salute you again, sir.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Michael? Well, the board also thanks Martin and you, Michael, and the rest of the staff and team that's helped made this important technology migration possible, and look forward to it serving us well over the next decade or so.
Thank you all.
And we've now come to the public comment section, portion of our meeting, and we have, we've, we're going to try a system to allow public comment if there are members of the public on here, and I don't see any, but if there are, please raise your hand, either the virtual hand through Zoom, or, you know, just your regular old hand, and let us know. And our associate director, Greer, is going to moderate any public comment.
There are no members of the public present.
Seeing no members of the public, do we have a motion to adjourn?
May I have, just have a question? All of that stuff that was going on on my computer, oh, an hour or two hours ago, did other people have all of that stuff too? Getting all those crazy emails? And if so, how did that happen? Do we know?
Getting, describe a little bit more for me. I know that you got one email that said it was encrypted, the, from me, and I responded, please, you know, that one wasn't from me. Turns out, I did cause it, that I was trying to send to you the press release, and it has, it had brackets in it, in the subject line, and if it had brackets in it, our server says that's an encrypted message, and so it kicked it out like that. But then, I don't know of others.
Okay, I didn't want somebody to be interfering deliberately with what we were trying to do.
Right, no, it was, it was okay.
I will back to your motion, John.
So do we have a motion and a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I guess we need to do a roll call for this too, Lorraine.
Okay, Jamie Burkhart.
Aye.
Kari Essery.
Aye.
Christine Harrison.
Aye.
Catherine Loser. Here you, Kathy.
Aye.
Fred Reisinger.
Aye. Happy holidays.
You too, and John Walsh.
Aye. So the ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. I think this went fairly smoothly, and I'm glad we got the work session in person last week, because we had a lot to cover.
It is nice to see, to see everyone's face.
It is.
With them. This was nice, to be able to see you again.
Have a great evening and happy holidays, and we'll see you next year, if not sooner.
That's right, same to you. Good night, everyone.
Bye. Happy holidays.